Tony, are you ready? We're gonna call our special meeting. Call our special meeting for Tuesday, August 15th, 1:00. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Goddard to do the invocation and Commissioner Pickens to do the pledge of allegiance. Please all stand.
If you would bow your head, please. Lord, thank you so much for this time we get to share. Thank you for allowing us to come in here. Thank you for keeping us free and keeping us in such a beautiful, wonderful place, Lord. And we just ask that you guide us through these times and you help us make good decisions, Lord, and we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, audience, for coming today. Today, we're going, our topic of discussion is the hiring of the, or discussion about the county administrator applicant. This is the time now on our agenda that the commissioners will discuss it. We're gonna open it up for public comments, and if the board feels inclined, we will go ahead and select the county administrator today. So commissioners, let's have a conversation about the applicants. You had three that you interviewed with last Friday, and we can go ahead and discuss that now.
Well, I can open it up. I thought all three were excellent. I really appreciate the board for going through all the applicants and narrowing it down. We had it actually down to four, but the three that we interviewed were all excellent, everyone, and we're gonna have to pick one of those, but they were all three excellent. Do you have any comments?
Good, thank you. Commissioner Pickens, any comments?
I also agree. I appreciate the committee that we put together and staff, and I believe the one-on-one interviews with our committee nominee were very informative. All the candidates came across well, and then also the public one-on-one that we had. I think it was good information that was provided.
Alright, I'm ready.
Okay, Commissioner Lible.
I wanna thank staff first and foremost, I really do. This has been, HR's been tough, you know, we had people drop out, and it's just been all kind of excitement with this process, shall we say. But historical, you know, being the longest-serving commissioner, I've seen projects started through the lean times, the hard times, and more than anything else, the person we picked today has to take us to the finish line. I feel like we're three-quarter way through a race. We have infrastructure in East Palaca, we have, well, it was said by one of the candidates that, you know, it's all ready to go. Who's gonna finish, you know, get the county to finish the race? And with that being said, to me, that's what I looked at primarily. Who can get us to the point that we've all wanted for a very long time? And that's what this process is all about, for me, anyway, and I'm sure the rest of you, but I've been through a lot, you know, through the recession and lingering on way longer than it should've, and I think this brings closure more than anything else. I think we get to finish. So thank you, and to everybody involved, to the candidates especially that are here, it's been a great experience, and I'm looking for even greater things in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible. I too wanna echo the sentiments of my commissioner, my fellow commissioners. The process was long, it was well-vented, so there's no doubt that we have, the hiring committee really did a jam-up job on it. The commissioners have really stepped out and did it, and we did interview three top-quality candidates here last Thursday evening, or Thursday and Thursday evening and Friday. I felt very good about the future of Putnam County with whoever we choose. I think that we're primed for prosperity, if you will, and I look forward to that decision to be made today, to move our county forward and to finally just get some help for our staff. I mean, our staff right now is overworked, and it would really be good to get everybody to take a deep breath and face the new fiscal year, October 1, ready to go, and again, to move us forward. So, is there any other commissioner comments? We'll go to public comments then, okay? Alright, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak to us today? If you will, please come and state your name and address for the record, and we are really interested in hearing your comments, so don't be shocked. Please come up. If you want me.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Roxanna Regan Weeks, Palaca, Florida. I've lived here nearly 20 years, from St. Augustine, and I'm pretty involved in things. I watch and try to stay involved. I would also like to thank staff and the committee. They did a nice job, they really did. The events that were planned at the riverfront, last Friday's questioning interviews, today. I'm glad the commission involved the public, more so this time than I've ever seen anything. The candidates are all excellently educated and qualified. I'm just, because of my knowledge and my residence here, I feel that Mr. Suggs, the Palaca City Manager, is the outstanding candidate, based on the fact that he's been here already, he has improved things at the city. I don't feel the need to go down to the city every two weeks at their meetings and fuss at them anymore and call them out, because in the last two years since he's been there, things have improved. The credit rating, the bond rating, there's been changes at the police department. He's scaled down the departments in a way to make them run more efficiently and save money by also subcontracting things out that are actually cheaper and less liability for the city than to have their own employees do so. Our fiscal year is ending in six weeks, and we're all aware of the problems there. We need somebody that can come in, as he did at the city when their finances were low, and take over. He's familiar with people here, he's, I've personally seen, and I actually took pictures of it and posted it on Facebook, when one of the streets collapsed, it was St. John's Avenue, I believe it was at the Fern End, that the city started the job and the county came right away to help them finish it. That's something I've noticed, that there's been a big disconnect the entire time I've been here, two decades, that the city and the county have had a somewhat distant relationship. I feel that this can be improved. We need somebody that can just hit the ground immediately. We don't have time, six months or even a year, for somebody to catch up to speed and realize what's going on in all the departments, and we need an immediate response. I feel Mr. Suggs is, will be qualified, and he's quite aware of things. The relationship with the city, he's got a good one there. I do talk to city employees, different departments. He is very hands-on, and that's important. You cannot run a county from sitting in your office in the air conditioner on a phone, just believing and accepting what people tell you over the phone. You have to go see for yourself and verify, and then you also have a better understanding when you see it, what they were trying to tell you. We can pull ourselves out of this, you know? We really can, and I hope we do so. Like I said, I believe all the candidates are excellently qualified. I just feel that Mr. Suggs, with his knowledge of both city and county issues already, we could build a relationship together with the city, and in doing so, it could possibly save millions per year between the two entities. They can combine, and I just hope, whoever you choose, that that person will lead us where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks, we appreciate that. Anybody else in the public would like to speak?
I'm Mitch Weller, I live at 219 Crestview Drive here in Palaca. I'm fairly new to the area, I've been here about three years now, and so I've tried to get a little bit involved in what's going on in the city and the county and watch what's going on, and I have some experiences that I would like to share with you guys at a later date, as far as a new person coming in and the problems that I ran into that I think are easily overcome. But I also wanna thank you for the process that you've gone through. It has been open and been very good. In my background, I have a tremendous hiring background. I was an operational director for nine states and hired upper echelon people all the way through for nine states. So as I went through this process, I treated it like I always did, and I have notes.
Good.
And so I met with each one of the candidates, as you did, went through a series of questions and got responses. I also would mirror many of the comments that the young lady before me said, as far as what's going on and what we need to cure things, but I also think that Terry Suggs is the proper fit for the community with his knowledge in the area, the job that he's done while he's here. I've talked to a number of city employees that really have enjoyed working with him and feel they're totally supported at all times. The other candidates were also very good. I think there was one distant third one, but two of them very close together, but all in all, I think Mr. Suggs is the best fit to fit the community.
Mr. Weller, thank you so much for your comments.
You're quite welcome.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Oh, come on, really? Alright, come on. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ed Kilbrough, 146, Barton Estates Circle, Palaca, Florida. There's not much to say after those two glowing things there, 'cause I was gonna stand up and each and every one of y'all know that I'm for Terry. I just believe Terry's, he's come in, he's invested, him and his wife have invested themselves in our community already by buying a home, moving here for the job that they have. They didn't just move anywhere outside on the outskirts of the community, they moved right square down in the middle of it. I can say that every time that, you know, being a businessman, I'm here in the city of Palaca, Main Street, anytime I've ever had any issues with the city that I needed to talk to Terry, Terry's door is always open. He's always there to be able to talk to, even if you call him, if he can't talk to you at that time, he texts you and tries to get a conversation going with you that way. Just truly believe that it would be just to our benefit as Putnam Countians to have him just transform you right on over and just be, just lead the community. I mean, he's already well in tune with what's going on. He knows what needs to be done. I believe he can work with Tallahassee just as well as he can Washington DC, just as well as he can with the little man on the street that's pushing a buggy. You know, he's just, he's a great man, he's become a good friend and all that, so I just wanted to echo that with everything else that's been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilbrough. Alright, anybody else? Alright, seeing no more public comment, we'll close this section of our meeting. And commissioners, this is the time, if you're choosing of a selection of a county administrator.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Mr. Terry Suggs to be our new county administrator.
Have a proper motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion concerning the hiring of the county administrator?
Well, I think we should discuss. I really do.
Yeah, I think we definitely should discuss it.
Yeah, you seconded it for discussion, but anyhow, we always start over here. Let's go down the line and hear what we got to say.
We'll start with me.
Go.
I will say, it wasn't an easy decision. I can tell you, the, I'll have to say his name, Mr. Groff I thought was an excellent fit also, has a lot of experience, he's an engineer, he's, he would be a major asset to our county, but Terry's also very familiar with everything that's going on, he's, he already knows what's going on here, that was my thing. He can hit the road running, he has a relationship with the staff, he has a relationship with the constitutional officers, he has, he has built a relationship in his short time here with a lot of people in this town, so based on that, I felt he would be the best fit. Nothing against Mr. Groff, he's, he was excellent.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens, you wanna, you're the second.
Okay. I think all candidates were qualified. When you hear from individuals, from staff or individuals that call you to voice their opinion, and they have done a little bit of research and looked at the qualifications of each candidate, and they say you have three good candidates to choose from, I think that's a positive. Albert Pinsky, he was definitely qualified and had the experience, but after interviewing with him and really thinking about Putnam County and the situation, I don't think he would've been a good fit. Not taking any way from anybody from Pennsylvania, but to come to Putnam County, I think it would've been a struggle for him to adapt. Colin Groff definitely is highly educated, an engineer, he definitely has the experience. He interviewed well, and I think that he would make a very good county administrator. And then Terry Suggs, it really came down for me between Colin and Terry. Terry definitely has the education, the background, and that I believe he would make a good county administrator also, so that's where I struggled with this. And I did a lot of reading, I probably read the candidate's bios ten times. Ten times, I'm not joking, ten times, and did a lot of soul-searching, 'cause this is a big decision. I think Putnam County is poised for moving forward and greatness. So after the interviews, I decided I would talk to some of the department heads, some of the staff, and get their opinions. And I also had a number of phone calls from individuals from Putnam County voicing their opinion, and I had people voice their opinion for Colin Groff and also for Terry Suggs, and they gave me their reasons why, and why they felt that one or the other candidate would be a good county administrator. But when it came down, I also talked to Mayor Hill and to Sheriff Gator Deloche. And when it came down to where I was going to go, is I feel that right now, that with his involvement in Putnam County and Palatka and the things that he's done, and the working relationships that he's built between the city, the city employees, the police department, and working relationships with the county, that I believe Terry Suggs would be the best fit for our new county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, and how do you follow that? If I could speak that out, I'd be a senator, but you did a very good job, and thank you very much. Terry, as you well know, I have respect for all the applicants that were here. I really loved Mr. Groff, I loved his attitude, I loved his willingness to take on the heavy challenges. I agree with also with you, Commissioner Pickens, Mr. Pinsky would have a hard time coming here and hitting the ground running. During the interviews, I asked Mr. Suggs some really tough questions and got really personal about things, and he was very brutally honest about how he wanted to move our county forward. And, you know, I've often said in my years of hiring people, some of the best hires I ever did was watching those people work, you know? We had the opportunity here in Putnam County to actually watch somebody work, and Terry, I've watched you work, and I've watched you volunteer, and I've watched you make the tough decisions, and that goes a long way with this commissioner, and that's why I feel like you're gonna be the best fit for Putnam County also. Commissioner Lible.
Dun-dun-dun. I was kinda statistical with this process yesterday and today. I can't believe the quality of candidates that we were privileged to interview. I learned a lot about, I shared with you a minute ago, our progress in this community over the last decade through interviewing those candidates, and it kinda gave me an inventory of what we had completed. One of them, I think, made the statement, said, "The whole county's low-lying fruit, pick it, go." So yesterday afternoon and this morning, I started with the three, and I went back over their resumes like somebody talked about, and I just went down to their experience. Mr. Pinsky was 25 years' experience with an incredibly strong financial background. I have a feeling that that county he oversees, which is a commonwealth that's so different from our form of government in Florida, that he is just a master at what he does, and he found it in red ink, he brought it completely into black ink, and every fund that he oversees just reeked of success. But I'm like, Bill said it best, I didn't have the gut that he was a good fit for us. I really didn't. I feel that he, in his career too, he was kinda reaching his twilight and would retire from here, and I didn't feel that's what we need in Putnam County at this point. It came down to two people, Terry Scruggs and of course Colin Groff, just like the rest of you. And from there, you know, I went to their resumes. Terry, City Manager, Palatka, City Manager, Keystone Heights, Lottoa Operations Supervisor, Planning and Zoning, Solid Waste Transportation, just a solid background and young in the start of his career. I flipped over to Colin, went down the line. Assistant City Manager, Public Services, Boynton Beach, Florida, Utilities Director, Boynton Beach, Florida, JEA Director, District Energy and Business Services, JEA Director, Technical Services, JEA Manager of Maintenance. So you see right there, he escalated through the ranks there at JEA, big, big responsibility. Stone and Joka, he was a Project Manager, City of Green Coast Springs, Assistant City Manager, City of Tallahassee, Assistant Wastewater Superintendent, City of Cape Coral, Project Manager, FPNL Field Engineer. Little more of a resume than Mr. Suggs, but I saw him almost identical with the exception of a few more years' experience with Colin. What I shared with you in the beginning here was, we've built our utilities in East Putnam, both wastewater, water. What's missing is hookups. Expand that, and we borrowed big, and I happen to be chairman, I signed my signature on about $40 million worth of loans to get that done. I'd love to see it succeed, and by the way, if it doesn't, I'm not responsible to never get the money from it. I'm really not. But with all that said, I'm happy anyway this thing falls today, but I'm gonna be the odd guy out, I'm gonna give my nod to Colin Groff, only because of his resume. But this is the hardest decision, and I pledge this, and it looks like it very well will be Mr. Suggs. I am at your service, sir, ready to go if the vote goes that way. But I don't ever wanna short-change Mr. Groff. I think that he brings a skill set to this county that could catapult us a little faster to our destination than Mr. Suggs, but I think in five years, Mr. Suggs is Colin Groff too, so this is a hard decision, and thank you for letting me express that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible, and you did a very good job expressing your opinion. We do have a proper motion on the floor in a second. Tony, if you'll do a roll call vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
That mean? Yes, nay?
District three? District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Okay. We have a three-to-one vote?
Welcome aboard, sir.
Aboard Mr. Suggs, we appreciate it. Mr. Suggs, I'm gonna take a point of pleasure here and invite you down to the podium to give us a few words, if you will. We still have to enter into contract negotiations, so there is still some work to do, but we would like for you to have the floor for a few moments, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Wow, what can I say, humbled. You are absolutely right that the process brought you 40, 50 candidates, you had three to interview, and Commissioner Lible, I will agree with you that I believe Colin Groff would've been an excellent choice as well, and hopefully our paths will cross again sometime, and, but I'm very humbled to be standing here today as the Putnam County Administrator to be, and thank you for your confidence in me. Hopefully I can do the things that you are expecting from me. I wanna take this opportunity, though, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my wife and all her support that she has given me in this choice and this career. It's not always easy, but yes, I definitely wanna thank my wife and thank my staff for putting me in a position to be able to do the things that we've done in this community, to be able to stand here today, you know, and this opportunity, with this opportunity in front of us. So I just wanna say thank you. I am looking forward to negotiating a contract. I do wanna contact my commissioners first and let them know, but anyway, it's gonna be-
I think they probably already know.
I think they probably do. But again, I'm just blessed, I truly am blessed, and, you know, when I took the position in Palac, it was a very difficult decision. My wife and I relied on the Lord for some guidance, and He brought us here, and He's also brought us here today. So I've had a lot of good support from not only my wife and from my staff, but from everybody, and you've got a great staff already in place here. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work very closely with them and with Stacy and with Stacy. But again, thank you again for your belief in me and your support, and I look forward to doing a good job in supporting all the community, all our citizens, and doing a great job to make you all proud. Thank you.
Thank you. I only bought 100 of those pens, so I pass them out very liberally, but we do welcome you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lible.
We'll let the room settle down just a little bit, and then I'd like to address item five on our agenda.
Okay. I don't think I should gavel down our incoming administrator.
It's not a good welcome, Matt. Okay, I would offer up a motion that we request a county attorney to enter into employment contract negotiations with Mr. Suggs as soon as possible.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Any further discussion by any commissioners? Alright, seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Is there any further business to come before this meeting? There is none this meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Just make a comment. Two things that kinda struck me today. One was that I see so many of the city staff that's here, I wasn't sure if they were hoping he was going or hoping he was staying. But, but the way they congratulate, I know that they know that was the right choice. And then the second thing was, I rarely agree with Roxanne Weeks. But I agree with everything she said today.
Brenda, did you get that?
And I wanted to congratulate her and thank her for those kind words for Terry, and I know that Terry spent a lot of time talking to all of the constitutional officers and many of the department heads, and I'm excited as one of many that will work for and with him, and looking forward to, as all of you said today, the betterment of our community, 'cause I'm so excited about where we're going, and I think this is- community because I'm so excited about where we're going and I think this is one of many first steps. And so, congratulations to him and to you and to the citizens of Putnam County on selecting the right man. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, since the Honorable Tim Smith went, I'll give the other constitutional officers here in the room, if you want a chance to speak. Sheriff, you're sitting closer, if you'd like to come up and say a few words? I know I put people on the spot and I don't mean to, but, you know, I do.
That's all right. That's something I've become accustomed to over the last several months and years. I just want to take an opportunity to publicly thank the commission as Ms. Weeks did and I have to say that I concur with all of her remarks as well. I think that the process was very thorough and did an excellent job of vetting all the candidates. And I appreciate all the hard work that staff and all the commissioners and everyone else that had a hand in it put into this process. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Myers, you look exceptionally beautiful today.
Hey, I didn't get any of that.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, have been in your position. The weight of the world seems like it was on you. What a fabulous process. Just listening to comments from everybody involved, what a great process was put in place. So, I commend everyone on that, especially you four, for making that decision on that process. I'm, like everybody else, I'm excited about the county I live in and I look forward to working with our new county manager and everyone else in this, in our fair county. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Manning?
Just real quick. First off, I think the Honorable Mr. Smith may have earned himself a quotable quote.
We don't control the newspaper, what they do.
I appreciate everything that you all have done in working through this process. I think you've done an awesome job of really vetting the candidates and coming together. And I think you've made a good choice. I want to congratulate Mr. Suggs. And just ask if I could just get maybe two minutes of each of your time before our next meeting individually, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Good deal.
Before we go, Mr. Chairman-
Mr. Lible.
Speaking of the interim county manager, we really, we thank Stacy, but we really didn't thank you. You did. You and Stacy Papel both served almost six months, I think, in the absence of a county manager and we'd be remiss not to thank you really, really strongly for your roles. You did an excellent job and it also brought out some things that wouldn't normally have come to the surface if we weren't in that situation and you both handled it well and we thank you for that very much.
Is there any other business to come before this board? Hearing none, this meeting will stand adjourned.